Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, May the 27th. If we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody and everybody watching online. Normally, we start with public comment, however, item number one, we had to change the agenda so that we could approve the contract with Giammarco Mullins and Horton and represented by Anthony Chubb tonight, so I'd like a motion to approve item number one.
So moved and.
I would like a discussion, please.
Sure, I'll get right to that, Mark, thank you. A motion?
A motion and I'm speaking for myself and I know many of us thrilled to have you here, Tony.
And support and then any discussion, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm concerned because the board packet included a signed contract and the signed contract was, we're here now discussing the approval, has your signature and Giammarco's signature on it.
Correct.
So I was under the impression that the supervisor needs to get approval to approve these contracts from the board before the signature is made on the contract.
Yes, that's why we're here.
Well, again, the contract's public, it's in the board packet, your signature's on it.
Correct.
When did the board approve it?
That's what we're asking for tonight.
But that's not my question, it was signed at a previous state in time.
It was signed by a previous state in time, but it's not effective until the board approves it, which is tonight.
Okay, let's talk about MCL 4175, which requires that all township spending be approved by the board before any contract is signed or money is committed, signing a contract before board approval violates this law. The Board of Trustees cannot approve this contract without accepting personal legal risk, the trustees could be held responsible if the board approves something that was signed before it was legally authorized. This could lead to individual legal liability, ethics violations, and loss of trust from the public. It also sets a bad precedent and weakness, the board's role in making decisions. The next step should be, should include legal review, assessment of internal controls and procedures, corrective action, and communication with the public. I move that we table this matter pending legal review and clarification of the appropriate authorization process.
Anthony, do you have a comment on that?
I am familiar with the law that's being referenced, as the supervisor said, the contract is not effective until approval by the board, which is why it's on the agenda right now, and so I think it's appropriate to move forward at this time.
And if I remember correctly, when we approved the contract with Seacrest Wardell, it was under the exact same circumstances, and we have not engaged Giammarco with any municipal work, we do work with them on labor agreements, but we haven't engaged with them in any municipal work until after this is approved by the board tonight.
Was Seacrest Wardell working on a previous, had a previous contract with the township?
They had a previous contract that expired and was terminated, I think it was April 15 when Dirk retired.
But the money is appropriated in the budget for legal services.
Correct, right.
Okay, so anyway, we have a motion, so if we have someone disagrees, so be it. We have a motion.
And we have support.
And we have support.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes six to one, thank you. Welcome aboard, Anthony.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you with us. And now we'll open up item number two as public comment, if you're here for public comment, you can come to this microphone with the long stem there and we'll give you three minutes and welcome, Alan.
Thank you very much, my name is Alan Wolf, I live at 4680 Pickering Road, I'm here today on behalf of Moms Demand Action, the reduction of gun violence. Later on this evening, the board will be asked by Captain Bezoudi to approve a proclamation declaring June 6th as Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I appreciate the board's support for that. If I may, just talk about something I experienced last month, I went to Lansing for Advocacy Day for ending gun violence, and I had an opportunity to meet a young, what I thought was a young woman who spoke that day, I didn't realize when I met her that she was one of the speakers, and she got up and she talked about her life, and she was a young mother with four children, and she was in an unhappy marriage and served her husband with divorce papers, but she came home that day from work, she found that her husband had killed two of her children, and then in front of her shot the other two, killing the other two children, and then shot and stabbed her repeatedly, and she was the only one of the five of them who survived. And it was just incredible to me, this was a woman who lived in Dearborn Heights and it's, you know, she wakes up every night with nightmares, and ever since hearing that story, it's hard for me to get that story out of my mind. And I think that, you know, so often, we live in such a safe community here, thanks to the great community that we live in and the great services that we have here, and it seems like those things are distant from us, but just up the street, on the street that I live on, one of my neighbors, her son murdered somebody and then committed suicide. It affects us more than we ever think about, and we realize, you know, that it affects all of us, and this is a very important issue. Over 1,400 people die by gun violence every year in Michigan, and I really appreciate the board passing this proclamation, but I'd like for you to think about what else can we do to stop this gun violence in our, in our community and in our state? There's more than we can do than just the proclamation, so I'd like to ask you to each think about this and how we can each play a role in ending this, this terror that we experience in America, and it's a uniquely American thing. I think we're all proud to be Americans, but this is something that's unique to the United States, and no other country has the kind of situation that we have, and I think we can fix it, it's within our power. Thank you.
I'm gonna just interrupt public comment for just a minute, if the board doesn't mind, I almost forgot and I want to apologize, but I want to welcome back our trustee Val Murray, who had a medical emergency, was it eight weeks ago, Val?
Six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago, and Val, would you just want to make any comments? I'm interrupting public comment, but I just want to tell you how happy we are, it's a miracle that you are here today for what you went through, so welcome back.
Thank you. I miss being here with you guys, and it's gonna be, it's kind of a slow process, but I feel very, very fortunate because our own EMS came to my house and rescued me when I had a medical emergency, and I had great care, and I had my husband and my three sons, one even flew in by my side, and I'm, I'm really, what my surgeon told me today is, it's very rare that somebody survives a brain aneurysm and even through the hospital stay and all the different steps, but I, I'm doing great, and they said it just takes a little while because your brain just feels a little funny, but I'm, I'm happy and clear thinking and getting around great, have no permanent long-term issues, so I feel grateful for everyone.
Wonderful.
Welcome back.
We're so happy you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. It makes me feel like getting back to normal, so I like it.
Glad, glad, welcome. All right, back to public comment, sorry for the interruption, if you have public comment, please come up to the microphone, my right, your left, and introduce yourself with your address, please, ma'am, the tall microphone right there, yes, thank you.
Stephanie Abo, I live out of a hotel room, I'm not gonna give you my address, so when I read, when I'm about to write at least some of it, you'll know why. I also have police reports here and complaints that I mailed to the chief here, who is deliberately not responding me, responding to me. So I deliberately wore this because I inform my government, my family, and a lot of people here, the city officials and police have referred to me as an anti-government, anti-Jewish hater, you can see my flag, I love, this is like one of my favorite shirts, so yeah, you refer to me as a racist of blacks, Mexicans, Jewish people, anti-government Alex Jones lover, and who is Courtney, don't answer because I only have three minutes, she called me after I left a message for the city manager, Mr. Hedrickson, she told me she works for Birmingham but may actually work for Bloomfield. His wife, mistress, I don't know who she is, that's another threat. You love to glorify the mafia, it's very embarrassing, do you know who I am, most of you do, it's odd to me, I'm a very law-abiding citizen, yet you are stalking my life relentlessly, I have police reports, false arrests, kidnapping, basically, what I'm about to say proves it with, of just a few of the reports I have. For the city employees, the police officers, and the great citizens of Bloomfield Township who mind their business and have no clue who I am, including other targeted girls and women like myself, allow me to introduce myself, my name is Stephanie Abo, I was born and raised my entire life in Birmingham. Birmingham changed the city twice, I believe, and has been Bloomfield Township for decades, this is my city, not yours, and your crimes against people like me, including men, have turned it into a garbage dump, where women, educated women, even lawyers, doctors, HR managers like myself, are being relentlessly harassed, stalked, bullied, threatened, into guardianships, robbed, raped by hundreds, maybe thousands of men, which is not sex trafficking, this is forced prostitution where they are being raped. I'm here because I'm being targeted and I've fought to protect myself since around 2019, I have moved about 14 times, then you tried claiming, along with my former family, trying to have me raped and murdered, because you have to murder the evidence afterwards that I'm delusional, bipolar, a paranoid schizophrenic, just to name a few mental illnesses, you keep illegally misdiagnosing me using Indiana doctors that are, that are here on work visas. And, sorry, I'm nervous because I know I only have a few minutes here, so what you guys did to my life is disgusting, I now question when police officers are committing suicide, are they getting murder, because very few have been able to help me in my situation, where are the good officers? You influenced, you along with my family influenced Indiana when I moved there to get away from you guys.
Ms. Abo, you're out of time, could you wrap it up, please?
Okay, okay, so it's gotta be done because I don't know what else to say other than if whoever's listening and cares, I'm gonna post everything that I wrote here that you're not, that you're not letting me read, it's gonna be on my social media, and now I know why you only give citizens three minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Leave me alone, leave my life alone.
Okay, any other public comment?
Unless you get your manager these officers.
If not, I'll close public comment and we'll move to item number three, consideration, consider consent agenda.
I'd like to remove payroll and vouchers.
All right, payroll and vouchers, we'll make item number four A. Okay, any other, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved, support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Before I move to the next item, I want to point out these microphones, I've noticed that if you don't speak into them, we don't, we can't record the voices, so if you just make a point of trying to get as close as you can, and you can hear when you're on and when you're off, right? Just a point of reference. Okay, so let's move, Mark, we'll take up now, all in favor of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, passes seven to nothing, item number four A will take under approved payroll and vouchers, Mark, you had a comment on that?
Yes, my no vote stands, there's, due to the lack of information in the quarterly reports, there's not enough balance in public safety to meet their requirements, the township does not show money moving in, payroll and vouchers through the end of January with benefits is about 16 million, the funds available for public safety are, or for 16 million for public safety, they start out the financial year with about 14 million in funds, that does not include their obligations for the pension bond debt, which is about $4 million, plus $3 million in transfers that are required in six months in, according to Jason Tice to cover the central services fees, so I'd like to know what funds are being used, and that has not been addressed yet. My other comments regarding the, still stand regarding the water replacement project, the township board approved $300,000 and not the full project, and I don't think that's appropriate according to our purchasing policy. Lastly, there was no, never an approval for the additional fees, the LTE fees for the new meters, those are over $12,000 a month, and they're expected to rise according to NOAA, our Public Works Director, to over $20,000 a month, so that's a lot of money going out, we were never advised, the residents were never advised us before, when that, those changes were made.
Okay, thank you, Mark, any other comments on four A to approve payroll vouchers?
Make a motion, we approve payroll and vouchers for May 27, 2025.
Any support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. And remember, Mark, your voice carries well, I noticed in the microphone, but not all of ours do for whatever reason, so again, just a reminder.
Step it up, huh?
Right, thank you, thank you, Val. Item number four, consider resolution declaring official intent of reimbursement project expenditures with bond proceeds presented by our Township Treasurer, Michael Showstack.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, we approved the formation of Special Assessment Districts 428 and 429 for the Bloomfield Village yellow and gold sections of their road project. The construction is going to begin pretty much if not this week, next week, and so we are gonna finance this project by issuing bonds, assuming the board approves that in our next agenda item, but until we can go through the process and sell those bonds, we need to advance the funds out of Township general fund money to cover the cost of the project. I've worked out a payment schedule with the road commission, so we're not advancing a lot of money, but we are advancing some money, and so this resolution that's in your packet is an official notice of intent that we are going to reimburse the township, the general fund money, out of the bond proceeds when we do eventually sell those bonds. Happy to take any questions.
No, that's pretty much standard policy.
It is, we do this every time.
So I would make a motion to approve.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Michael. Item number five, consider authorizing issuance of Special Assessment Bonds LTGO Series 2025B presented by Michael Showstack, our Township Treasurer, Michael.
Thank you, and I also have here our Township Bond Attorney, Laura Bassett, from Dickinson Wright, so if there's any legal questions as it relates to this resolution, she'll be able to answer those, I can handle any of the project or financial questions. So we're gonna be issuing Special Assessment Bonds to cover the cost of the construction, they are what they call limited tax general obligation bonds, which means that the township offers its guarantee for these bonds as a second, as a backup. The primary guarantee of, for these bonds is the special assessments themselves, so we're going to be assessing all of the residents in these two districts for the next 15 years for those that don't prepay, so for anybody paying attention tonight, residents in those districts have until July 15th to pay, prepay rather, without interest, any portion or all of their special assessment. They should have received a letter from me last week with the amount and how to pay, so we're gonna keep it open until July 15th for residents to prepay without interest. After July 15th, residents can of course prepay or pay at that point, but there will be interest that will accrue, and we're gonna sell the bonds after July 15th. And as I said, the guarantee for those, for the repayment of the bonds first is the assessments themselves, and then secondarily would be the township's limited tax general obligation guarantee. We are combining the two Special Assessment Districts into one bond issue, so we're gonna be selling, you'll see on the resolution, a little over $16.3 million worth of bonds, less any prepayments that we get between now and July 15th, and so we'll have one bond offering, and this is Series 2025B, because as you might recall, Series 2025A was done back in March with the South Bloomfield Highlands Project, that was 2025A Special Assessment Bonds, these will be 2025B, and they are a separate issuance of our bonds. So with that, this resolution that's in your packet provides for the repayment and the structure of how we're gonna issue these bonds, we're gonna be using a competitive sale framework, which means that we are like we would with any other contract, we're gonna go to a public auction of the bonds, we're gonna say this is the amount, 16.3 million, 15 years, anyone who's interested in buying these bonds, give us your best price, and we will go with the best price, the lowest interest cost. Aside from that, I'm happy to take any questions about the bonds or the process, Laura can answer any questions as well from the board, but this is the standard resolution that we always review and approve for issuing of bonds, but drafted by council, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I was just gonna say, as you had mentioned, it is standard procedure we've used for all of our SADs and whenever we've needed it, and it's very straightforward, very good drafting, appreciate it, and unless there's questions, I'd make a motion that we approve.
Support.
Support, any other comment? If not, I'll ask to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Presentation of our Fire Department Annual Report presented by our Fire Chief, John Leroy, welcome, John.
Good evening. Proud to be able to come up here tonight and present our annual report for the first time in my tenure of the Fire Department, it's a fairly routine report, not a lot this last year that happened out of the ordinary, which is a good thing. So I just wanted to start out by with the, our mission statement, the mission of the Bloomfield Township Fire Department is to protect lives, property, and the environment through prompt, skillful, innovative, and life safety services with compassion and respect. They strive to do that on a daily basis and with everything that they do. So our organizational chart, this is, we run currently three platoons, battalion chief with 19 other firefighters on a shift, so we have a total of 67 personnel currently throughout the department, and I am proud to say for the first time in several years, we are fully staffed at this point. We have several firefighters and paramedic school, but ultimately, we are fully, fully staffed, so as this next generation or next group gets out of school, we'll be in a very good place. So for those people watching or on the board who don't know, we have four fire stations in Bloomfield Township, Station One is in the green area, right there, it has, it primarily, it's all residential for the most part with many lakes that reduce the number of calls and overall property density. Station three, or two is on the east side of the township, covers the I-75 corridor all the way down to Adams and Big Beaver Road. Station Three is the pink section, which is primarily some commercial but primarily residential, and that is our busiest station, as I'll show you in a little bit. And Station Four is the area in the yellow bordering the Pontiac, the Pontiac City Line, Woodward Corridor, Telegraph Corridor is primarily commercial and some light industrial in that area with some residential as well, so it's really a diverse area, and each station has its own types of calls that they're really specifically and heavily involved in, are a little bit different. Station Two, for instance, has the only full-service nursing home in the township, so they have a lot of calls for service at that facility, and Station Four and Station Three have many calls for motor vehicle accidents at the busy, in the busy areas along Telegraph and the major intersections as well. So over the past year, this was the break, total breakdown between the fire stations, as you can see, Station Three was the busiest with a shade over 2,000 calls, 1,200 of which, almost 1,300 of which were EMS-related and 730 related, where I call them fire or other-related. More so on the other side, you'll see the, the yellow is fire and other, and that represents all, all the types of calls, whether it's fire alarms, fires, power lines, all, pretty much all encompassing of multiple different hazards, EMS is motor vehicle accidents, EMS patients, and then the total across the board. So like I was saying earlier, with Station Three being the more residential area, it pulls the most calls, and the densities, and where our property, district lines are, they have the greatest area, they cover with their ambulances too. So this is just showing that a different way, so we only had, in order for it to be counted as a fire, there actually has to be physical flames and/or like a house fire, and it's not a fire until it touches a member of the, the structure. We only had 13, I believe, 13 structure fires last year where they, it actually touched the house, doesn't count the batteries or smaller type of fires or anything like that, or a mechanical, some sort of, it's not a structure fire until it actually touches something in the house. EMS-related was 3,600 calls, the hazardous conditions, fuel spills, power lines, carbon oxide type, type of incidents were 357. Service calls, that's citizen assists, public assist, also power lines, things like that, 818, good intent, smoke, people saw smoke, or they, they called in an accident that wasn't there or it wasn't an accident, those type of calls were 400, and we had just a shade under 500 fire alarms, for a total of 5,795 calls. And that just gives you the percentage breakdown of those calls, just to kind of show that EMS is the biggest driver of service in Bloomfield Township, it keeps us very extremely busy, and with three to four transporting rigs, we average between 16 and 17 calls per day. Some days are busier than others, there's no rhyme or reason to them, but it really, it keeps us very steady. And like I was alluding to earlier, this is the, really the first year where something, I can't explain why, well, I can't explain why the, the number of calls decreased, and 2020 obviously was the COVID dip, people just didn't call, didn't call for services because they were afraid to go to the hospital, they didn't want to go. We had, we had a reduction in services, we bounced back up, and in the last two years, really, the, the decrease is two, related to two separate things, we had a fewer storms last summer, and ironically, we, we ran over 129 less calls on power lines, we had 130 less lift assists, and we reduced our police assists, which was us going out and blocking for police officers or accident scenes for them, for, by 61. So with that, that, those three things right there reduced our calls for service by 320 calls from the previous year. So if you plug those numbers right, and we're right to where we were last year on those. So in 2024, as you can see, this is kind of the month-to-month, we started out the year very busy in January, and then there was only one other month throughout the year, it looks like, that we even came close to the previous year, we were down across the board. And the one bounce that we had in August was ironic, we had a couple storms that rolled through during that time, and that was the one driver of a lot of power lines down over that short period of time. The, so here's our incidents, by time of day, they happen at all hours of the day and night, from midnight through 11:59 PM, as you can see, it really starts to climb during the morning rush hour, it's about 6 o'clock, it almost doubles, and then proceeds to double throughout the day, and on a daily or a weekly basis, this curve remains the same, and it really goes until about 11 o'clock at night, until you see that drop down where it, there's no longer that huge demand, where we're looking at multiple calls occurring at the same So last year, we had, this is kind of So last year, we had, this is kind of eye opening, even though we were down on our number of calls slightly, 42% of the time, we were still on multiple incidents occurring at the same time. For example, most of the time it's two, three. Primarily, we have three in-service ambulances at any given time and on good days with, with staffing with, depending on vacations, we have a fourth. So we can handle three incidences at the same time fairly routine, no problem. It's when we get up into the over three to four incidents at a time where those drivers of service, we need to call for help. Prime example of today is, is we actually sent help to one of our neighboring departments who had a structure fire going and about 10 minutes after we sent the help, we went for 13 calls in an hour. It was extremely busy where all the other agencies around us responded to us to help us out and we, we do that with them as well. So it's, it's really a sharing of resources that makes this area work well. And all of our partners in this area, we all work well together to ensure that we have that overlap that we need because we can't cover, on busy days like this, you can't plan for those busy days. And our mutual aid partners are, I show, I show this every year just to give them the credit that they deserve for helping us and we help them equally. If you were to look at the numbers for mutual aid across Oakway, we give almost as much as we receive, which is, we're not, we're not an abuser of the system and it's really a balance because we're also centrally located within that. So it's easier for us to get and give as opposed to some of the other outliers that only have one or two other departments to pull from, unless it gets really bad in their areas. But Birmingham, Ferndale, West Bloomfield, Waterford, Rochester Hills, Royal Oaks, Southfield, Farmington Hills, Madison Heights and Independence all deserve credit for being part of this organization and helping us all succeed. Last year, we had over almost 14,000 hours of training in, across the fire department and I even think that's a little light. I think we didn't capture some of the hours that were EMS related due, from our new hires. And the numbers I'm seeing this year are blowing these, these out of the water. Operations Officer Van Heck has taken his, made his mission to account for all these hours that we feel that we may have been losing and he's doing a tremendous job so far. So we had almost 50, or 30 some percent between, really close on EMS and fire, which is, the EMS side is driven by those paramedic student hours, but then almost 1,000 hours of officer development. And we had a whole, many firefighters yet this past year that we hired that were probationary. So as we hired more people or, and we got younger, those probationary hours tend to elevate as well. The emergency management and the task force, Michigan Task Force One accounted for about 300 hours. And the, when I say technical and rescue and hazmat, that's, that's one of those shared assets of the Oakway mutual aid system. We each have up to six, eight members of each the tech rescue team and the hazmat team. So when an incident, that, one of these incidents occurs, it's, those are very infrequent. So you, no one department could have enough people to meet the needs at that time, but when you pool the resources, you can have 20 to 30 on scene in a relatively short amount of time. And that accounted for 638 hours. Public education was down, but I, I also believe that we have the school program that didn't get folded into this. And our second grade school program run through the fire, fire and life safety division meets every second grader in Bloomfield Township over the course of, and, excuse me, in the Bloomfield Hills School District over the course of the year. And they administer a pre-test and post-test, which really gauges how much they've retained and then they, they test them again the following year to make sure that that knowledge was retained. And I truly believe that that is one of the reasons why we have such a low amount of fires and things like that, because we don't have the juvenile, a juvenile fire problem. And the safety classes that they teach, I really think prepares them for the rest of their lives. And then physical fitness, obviously it's a very demanding job. So as part of that grant program, we track the physical fitness in the gyms and then the peer, we have a peer-to-peer training program now through the IAFF, which allows them to develop programs for all different types of people's conditions and/or their strengths and weaknesses and things like that. So those broke down to, you know, 30% ish over the, between the EMS and the fire and then brought on by physical fitness and officer development and all of those. This is just, if you haven't ever seen the, we have a Bloomfield Fire Department Training Facility that Chief Boucher built several years ago. I had the privilege of taking Supervisor McCready up there a few weeks ago while they were doing some training and it was, it's a very nice facility that we built, that the firefighters built several years ago out of Conex containers. And all the work was done by the firefighters to build it up to where it is today. And it's, it's, it really is a luxury to have this facility in our backyard, we don't have to send people to. It's a non-live fire facility, so we can do everything but burn in the facility. We can do search and rescue, we can do training evolutions, anything that you can think of. We have either made a prop or are making a prop to make firefighters better. So last year, EMS patient wise, you, you can see we were slightly reduced on the total number of EMS patients, but we were only reduced on the total number of EMS calls. So that's less vehicle accidents, things like, or multiple patient accidents where we have more than one in the same scene. And it was a big reduction in the amount of CPRs that we had. I can't explain a huge decrease like that, but we, across the board, and some of these numbers fluctuate from year to year because of the way that we're required to record them for the, through the state of Michigan and the my MCIS, the data, the way it gets recorded. So we transported 3,867 patients last year, so it was about a one, almost 2% decrease in the number of patients. I just threw in the transporting revenue. Over the past several years, we've really remained flat on our transporting revenue. The number of calls have not drastically increased. Any increases that we have seen are based upon the higher reimbursements that are given by, depending on the insurance companies. We recently completed a study for Medicare. They're looking at Medicare funding and the true cost of EMS, but that study was pretty much eliminated. They, they realized that it costs way more to do EMS than what they're reimbursing to the point where there's no way that they're going to be able to increase to the funding that they need to. So what they do with that, it's, they have the data, but now they're, we'll see what happens with it. In this past year, the EMS, the next couple of slides with the training that we do and it's, we've seen a huge increase and the police department will attest to this, that we've seen an increase in traffic accidents and even an increase in very difficult and bad traffic accidents. Very high speed can be attributed to not paying attention, just the general driver, everything that you see. It's amazing, you'll get a nice sunny day out like today and the number of accidents go up just because people aren't paying attention. And we've had several instances of that, including last week where you may have seen it on the news where I, they, our crews extricated an individual from the back or from the front seat of a van that I, I don't know how he walked away. He had injuries, but I don't know how he walked away from it. There was no space left in this car and he walked away from it. But some of these accidents that we're, that we're seeing are, are like that. I mean, these, these cars are very high speed, high impact collisions. And the only, the only benefit to them is, is these newer cars are built to withstand and crumple. The engineering is phenomenal, they have new materials in them that help, but they are, that is the only reason why people are walking away is the safety things that have been built in. So to go along with these accidents, Squad One was shown last week in service. This is our new heavy rescue that was almost three and a half years in the process of being designed and built. It replaced, replaced the old soar truck, which used to look like a beverage, beverage truck, a modified beverage truck. And this truck is designed to house, it's really the special operations apparatus. It has, one half of the truck is for technical rescue, which is confined space hazardous, or excuse me, confined space, high angle, trench, machine type of rescues. And the other side is hazmat and extrication related. So it's hazardous materials and carries additional sets of extrication tools, support struts, all of that, those types of things for those even more challenging, high, high intensity types of extracations that need to be done, whether it's on a bigger vehicle or you just need another set of tools. All of our engines already carry extrication tools, but this is just a, another set. So that way, when we have multiple crews on scene, everybody, almost everybody can have a tool that is working at some time to perform an extrication efficiently. And then this year, we, we've really been working on, you know, this is the picture of the open house. We started a program where we auctioned off at several of the schools, a take, take a student to school day and community interaction. And we've really been, the former fire inspector, Moran, who's has since left and fire marshal Vlahos, were able to procure several cases of smoke detectors that they would go out and replace smoke detectors in homes for people that needed them. There are the 10-year smoke detector batteries and they would just go out and all they have to do is put an address down and report it to the state and it's done. So we've been really doing a lot of those in the past year. Another, another key thing that Bloomfield Township Fire Department, we were one of the inaugural members of Michigan Task Force One. We, the township has always supported that organization since its inception back in the early 2000s. And it really has, it's, it's phenomenal to see what that organization has turned into from a grassroots organization to where they are now with the state funding and basically this group of highly trained people is technical rescue and hazmat people even above, they're the special forces. These guys are trained for, these personnel are trained for water rescue, swift water, you name it, they can do it. They take, when they, when they deploy somewhere, they take doctors with them, they take engineers with them. They are, they are a phenomenal group. Majority of the time, all the training is backfilled, they, they cover the costs of the training. And then there's always some sort of reimbursement component coming back when they get deployed. It depends on which organ, how the request was received, whether it's a FEMA request or a MEMAC request, which is an interstate mutual aid agreement. But last year, this group went to Texas for the floods in May and then Hurricane Debbie in South Carolina. And then the big one was Tropical Storm Halleen. They were down there for several weeks and they were very, very, in fact, to the point where they have such a relationship with North Carolina, North Carolina will request that team by name right off the bat because they, they know what they're doing. They've, they've proven, especially in North Carolina, they know what they're doing. And North Carolina says, we want three teams, one of them is Michigan. So they, they, this group really does tremendous work when they're there and should be applauded for it. And some of, this is some of the pictures that they, when, every time they get deployed, they always send back a, a daily, here's what we're doing, almost like a, just to show, get the, show everybody why we support them. So this was, a lot of this was all in North Carolina. That town at the top left is gone. That was one of the flood, flooded areas that, they were in the Chimney Rock area of North Carolina and it was, they were, they were putting boats across to get to the other side and then their crews would walk tens of miles a day because there was no bridges on the other side. They were hiking and the roads were gone and trying to go from house to house and perform the work that they were doing. So they, they really worked everything down there and they, they made a difference. So with that, I'd just like to finish up by saying thank you to the township for all of your support. It is very tremendous. And then next year, I will have a new, hopefully a new updated picture with a new ladder truck and the, to go with the squad that just went into service.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. That was a nice presentation and I know we have a trustee here that's very thankful for your services, so I'll let her lead us here, Val.
Yeah, I was going to jump in, but you beat me to it. So John, thank you, great presentation as always. I have always felt like we had the best services. Most of my experience was like, you know, the police come out because there's a problem with a neighbor's house or there's this or that, or somebody else is having the emergency. But the night that I had my emergency, I only learned today that 50% of people that have an aneurysm burst make it to the hospital. I did not know that. My husband misunderstood and thought this was less deadly, but I saw the surgeon today and it sort of, it sort of blew me away. It just kind of gave me chills. So the four gentlemen that came to my house, my husband said they were those so fast he couldn't believe it. They were wonderful. They got me to the hospital alive, which only 50% apparently make it, which scared me because I did not know that. Probably better I didn't know it till today, so I was feeling better. But, and then out of that, only 25% actually make it. And those were some really chilling numbers and I can't thank you and your department enough. I've heard we have the best, I know we have the best. I'm going to come in and, and see them eventually and personally thank them, but we have outstanding services and I'm forever grateful.
Thank you.
That's nice, Val. I don't think anybody could match that statement. Any other comments? That says it all.
One, one thing I just want to mention, which is, it's, it's not for us here, it's kind of for the public, which is twice I've really noticed the difficulties the rescue vehicles are having getting traffic to stop or slow down. I don't know if it's getting worse. I've just noticed it more, even at Exeter here, where they want to cross telegraph to, to go north. I, I can see them struggling to get, you know, to blare their horns and over and over again to get people to stop on telegraph to let them out. And, and you know, people look, you've got to listen for the sirens, you've got to see where they are, you've got to stop, you've got to come to the side of the road on the shoulder. The other one I noticed was the rescue was trying to cross Woodward at Corden. I don't know how long they sat there and blazing their sirens and their lights going on and cars were barreling down, south down on Woodward, not stopping, not moving over and nothing. So eventually they did get the, you know, a stop, but it was just shocking to see the disrespect and the, and the lack of perhaps knowledge that people have or the awareness of what's going on around them. So people please, you know, these guys have got important work to do and they got places to be on a very short timeline.
I think those, those two go hand in hand. The one, that intersection is next, hopefully next up on our, the signal abatement, which will allow us to go, it will turn the light green as it, as it approaches. There's two intersections that I have in mind, I would like to get, we did four initially, it's working. It works until you get stuck in traffic because it has to cycle through the whole thing, but it does, turns the light green going the one way and it really makes it safer for an apparatus going through an intersection, especially in an emergency. The second, the biggest thing is, is that they're designing these cars so well, they're so much quieter, no matter how loud we make these fire trucks, people aren't going to hear them. And that's, that's the biggest problem that we have is the, the engineering is so good on a lot of these that they can't make a siren louder. So.
Well, thank you, Martin, for bringing that up because for my entire life, every time I see an EMS or a fire truck, you know, my husband and I are very respectful people and we like, we pull over and we are shocked. Just a few days ago, we were coming back and someone actually just pulled around and started to edge out and here's an ambulance coming behind them. And, and whenever I would see that, I would just kind of cringe and think, what if that was your family member, they were rushing to help? was your family member, they were rushing to help? And then it was me. You guys took me for my first ever ambulance ride. So excellent point that Martin made. It's like something that maybe we should try and talk about or promote that how critical it is and how minutes matter for people that are having that emergency. And, you know, wouldn't you want your loved one or your friend or your neighbor to not have to deal with somebody that's in such a hurry, they pull out in front or they don't pull over? It's, it's, it's a lack of respect. So again, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Item, thank you. Item number seven, consider proclamation declaring June 6, 2025 National Gun Violence Awareness Day presented by Captain Brian Bezooti. Welcome, Brian. Welcome, Captain.
So upcoming June 6 is, is National Gun Violence Day in support. I just want to let you know that it shouldn't just be one, one particular day. Gun violence unfortunately is a major topic all through the United States. In support of the gun violence, just some of the things that Bloomfield Township Police Department does do, we offer gun locks at the front desk, free gun locks, then anybody can come by and pass or pick them up free of charge. Another thing that we are actually working on and it was brought up to an idea and I think we're going to go ahead and implement it, it was in conversation, is the idea, excuse me, of a gun safety course in the upcoming open house. It might be a 15, 20-minute or 30-minute presentation in regards to how we can go ahead better secure the weapons and the firearms in the house. In addition to that, also gun safety. So if there is a firearm, what do you do? Don't touch it. Go to, go to adult if it's a child. There's no reason to go ahead and touch any of those firearms or those weapons. For advanced pistol carriers, we have advanced firearm course that we actually run. In addition to that, we have our CPL course. So unfortunately, gun violence is, is a topic of conversation. And again, I think it's a very important thing to note, it shouldn't just be one particular day. Within the agency and even across the community in the state of Michigan, gun violence is very prominent. And I don't have the numbers in front of me and the numbers I just know are very high. A lot of it is about prevention, a lot is about education because in reality, it is a public problem. It's a health risk, it's a health concern. Securing the weapons is, is first and foremost and education is also supported. With that, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. I could read the proclamation and then someone can make a motion.
Sure.
So proclamation declaring June 6, 2025 National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Bloomfield Township. Whereas on an average day in America, 124 people die from firearm-related injury. Whereas firearm-related injury is one of the leading causes of death for American children between newborn and 19 years of age, with 1,703 children killed in 2023. Whereas over the last three years, on average, Michigan, there is a, there are 1,500 gun deaths with about 15 deaths per 1,000 people, meaning that Michigan averages the 24th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Whereas a municipality's highest responsibility in the community they serve is preserving and promoting public safety. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with storing guns safely and keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas local act officials and law enforcement officers know, know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas on January 2013, whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15 and to help honor 118-plus American lives cut short and the countless survivors who were injured by shootings every day and has, and has designated June 6, 2025, the first Friday in June, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas the idea of inspiring, the idea was inspired by Hadiya's friends who asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color that hunters wear to announce themselves to other hunters when out, when out in the woods. Orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas in coordination of the Bloomfield Township Police Department, the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees pledges to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our citizens safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Township Board of Education declares Friday, June 6, 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Bloomfield Township.
I'll take that as a motion, Martin.
Well, I will formally make the motion that we support the proclamation. Gun violence and safety is, you know, it touches all of our lives way too close sometimes and we should do everything we can. I appreciate what Officer Bezooti is saying, you know, that we're doing. I know we did gun buybacks at one time too, but I appreciate everything you guys do and I wholeheartedly support this proclamation.
Support.
Support. Any further comment? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider authorization of PNC Bank as custodian for the township investments presented by Michael Showstack, our township treasurer.
Thank you. So at present, we use Fifth Third Bank as the custodian for the pension plan, pension trust and the retiree healthcare trust. And then I use Huntington Securities and Fifth Third Securities for, as custodians for the bonds that we hold in the operating reserves portfolio. The last time we went out to bid for custodial services, I believe was eight years ago. And so I felt it was time to go back out to make sure that we were getting the best price for our needs. Now that our plans are a little bit bigger, plus I wanted to consolidate, bring the bonds over and make it, you know, one, one custodian with linked accounts for all of the different trusts, make it easier administratively for me to manage. So we went out to RFP. I presented at RFP at the Financial Sustainability Committee and the Board of Trustees' Joint Investment Review Session on February 5. And at that time, it was reviewed by both boards. I issued the RFP on February 10 and asked for responses by March 21. I received four responses, Fifth Third Bank, Comerica, PNC Bank and US Bank. I've put all of the proposals into the packet. Brian Green, our investment advisor and I reviewed those submissions and spoke further with PNC Bank and US Bank, which were the two lowest cost providers. And I did a demo of their online platform to see how we would manage everything, which is, you know, easier, better to work with, et cetera. And I decided that PNC Bank presented the best combination of not only cost, but also their online services for ease of administration. So I'm asking the board to authorize PNC Bank as a custodian for the pension plan, the retiree healthcare plan and the township's surplus operating reserves. And the resolution is in your packet. Happy to take any questions?
I just know when that was present, when you presented this to the Financial Sustainability Committee, that PNC Bank was by far the, the best choice to utilize and for all the reasons you said, plus in addition to that, it was most efficient and most accurate compared to some of the others. I move we approve the authorization.
I have a few questions. Is this the, first of all, you have a very capable deputy treasurer. I don't see the deputy treasurer's name on the list of individuals that can transfer funds for this. I think we should amend the proposal to include the deputy treasurer as well.
I'll defer to legal counsel, but the deputy treasurer is fully empowered under statute to act as the treasurer in all regards, except sitting at board meetings. So by virtue of saying that the township treasurer and finance director are authorized, that would also imply the deputy treasurer? Is there any thought on that?
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Under the Charter Township Act, that is exactly how it works, is there are certain limited enumerated circumstances within that act when the deputy treasurer is allowed to act in your state. And so I think it's covered by the act.
Right. And Mark, the deputy treasurer will be fully empowered under the account documents to handle future issues. Should I be absent or unavailable to execute a transaction, the deputy treasurer would be fully empowered and authorized to act in my place. But in terms of the initial transfer, I'll, I'll be handling that.
Will we have multiple accounts for the surplus funds for water and sewer, building inspection and the other funds to accrue investment income for those, those sub-accounts?
No, there will be one account for the operating reserves.
This is a great opportunity to follow the recommendations of the Department of Treasury for the state of Michigan and follow best practices. The, the information you obtained allows us to have multiple accounts. Why wouldn't we do that? It would save resources in separating funds out and allowing especially water and sewer with 20 million in assets, cash assets at various times of the year to help lower water and sewer rates. I think the residents would be very happy to have lower water and sewer rates.
I think the residents would be happy to have lower water and sewer rates and we can entertain conversations about transferring money from the general fund to the water and sewer fund when we discuss the water and sewer rates. But the interest, as we've gone over now multiple times, accrues to the general fund according to statute. And having multiple accounts with multiple securities in each of those accounts would be unnecessarily burdensome administratively to have, you know, different investments in different accounts. It's just, it's, it's unnecessary.
But we can't even get fund balances for public safety in the quarterly reports, so...
We're not voting on where the money goes. We're voting on if we're going to use this as a account, right? We're not voting on where the, we're just voting on if we're going to take the money to this account, correct?
Yes. And I want to make... Fund balance is a accounting construct and fund balance is calculated once a year when you close your books. That's how fund balance is calculated. It's an accounting measure. It is, has nothing to do with the accounts that you keep liquid securities in. So what I'm asking from the board tonight is to authorize PNC Bank, National Association, a national bank, to act as custodian and hold the investments for the pension fund, which includes stocks, bonds, mutual funds, private equity, all of the investments in the pension plan, all of the investments in the retiree healthcare plan and the government bonds that are in one aspect of the operating reserves. We have multiple aspects of the operating reserves. We have local government investment pools, we have money markets and we have bonds that we hold in, in these accounts. And that's what PNC Bank would hold. They would hold the actual bonds, government bonds that we invest in. And that's what I'm asking for approval.
And there were, that was the rate, the very competitive rate they gave us to be the custodian of our township investments and that's the issue at hand.
That's correct. One and a half basis points.
Okay.
And that's the relevant issue. The relevant issue is just having PNC Bank as our custodian for our investments. Everything else is really off, off task and not relevant. And with that said, I will make the motion that we approve PNC Bank as our custodian.
Support.
Support. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is seven to nothing. Okay. Item number nine, I'm not sure why this made it to nine, but Martin, I'm going to let you go ahead and introduce this one, if you would please.
Okay. So item nine happens to be a short little kind of informational piece. I'm a history buff and we all know that upcoming is the 200th anniversary, but I thought we might start talking about that now by recognizing that this past Sunday, the 25th of May, is the 198th anniversary of the first meeting of the Bloomfield Township. At this time, it was a citizen meeting where they appointed or elected their officials and copy of the minutes are, were in the board packet that were taken. The original minute book, by the way, is, is, is in my office. Actually, I was reading it and preparing for this. And we had it restored last year to as much of its initial glory as possible. But what's interesting is just shortly after the, organizing of Bloomfield Township, the 19, 18, 30 census showed there are about 30 families living here. Interestingly, if you count those, all those positions up, that's like 25 people. So like everybody was involved in Bloomfield Township government at that time and these are all, you know...
And you need your fence viewers.
Elected, yeah. And so the fence viewers are really important. And so Tom, if you'd move me to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about what some of these people did. There was no treasurer. I don't know why, I mean, there was even, there was some money, but no treasurer at the beginning. But a clerical supervisor, Ezra Park, by the way, was recently, it was passed, I believe in Congress and the Senate to name the Bloomfield Township post office after Ezra Park. It hasn't yet been implemented, but a couple of years ago, that was passed. So three highway commissioners, poor masters and so forth. But as far as highway commissioners, you know, back then, there was no Michigan Department of Transportation, there were no, in fact, highways as we know them today, but you know, the state legislature passed the powers and duties of the township and one of the things we had to do is, was appoint three commissioners of highways and those individuals were then asked to divide up the township into districts. And the roads were maintained by, you know, the overseer of the road who then decided if a road needs work. And the tax was either cash or local residents had to come out and work on the road.
Pay with labor.
Yeah, yeah. So it was kind of interesting. Fence viewers, anybody, anybody? Fence viewers? Fence viewers were really very important.
We call those peeping Toms now.
Yeah, right. So at the time, livestock, you know, was a major thing. There's a lot of farms here and they had to have fences and they also needed to make sure the fences were maintained. So fence viewers would, would visit neighbors' farms and inspect the fences to make sure that they were sufficient and could even compel a property owner to pay for needed maintenance or repairs so that the animals wouldn't be getting up and going, you know, going around the community. Fence viewers worked closely with the next ones, which were the pound masters. And that is they, they maintained an impound for loose livestock. Pound masters would notify the owner of livestock that was caught wandering around, collect, you know, keep the livestock and their, their pound. This is an example of one from New England in the early 1800s. So I'm not exactly sure what they looked like here, but that is similar in timeframe to what, what we're talking about. And if people didn't come up to collect, pay the fine and the fees and collect their animal, they would be slaughtered, auctioned or slaughtered and, and sold. So I thought those were all quite interesting. I didn't go through the others, but those are the kind of things, what is a pound master and, you know, why are there fence, fence sitters or whatever they were, fence viewers? And then there were a few actions at this first board meeting. I think they're all kind of of note. The first one was directing the commissioner of highways within 40 days to lay out the township into road districts and appoint the overseers of the roads, which I mentioned earlier, the folks empowered to decide that the road needed work and compel people to come out and do it or pay some money. They, there was also a resolution, resolution that for any person who had produced a certificate from the former overseer of roads, for the number of days of labor, they should, should be paid. All fences had to be four and a half feet in height. It was unlawful for boars to run at large, but the rams could run at large all they wanted, except between August 20th and December 25th. I don't know why, but maybe we'll learn during this, as we ramp up to our 200th anniversary. $50 was raised to support the poor. And there were eventually poor farms and poor houses and poor farms were the major way that, that at that time, Michigan handled and, you know, poor or indigenous individuals. They were working on a farm or house in a poor house. And there was a poor master that was appointed at that first meeting. And then lastly, the township offered a $5 bounty for any wolves killed within the township. I don't know how they figured out whether the wolf was in the township or in West Bloomfield Township, you know, but there probably...
It wasn't West Bloomfield Township back then.
It was, right. Originally, there was just two, Oakland Township and Bloomfield Township, but there was probably some sort of, you know, bounty lawyer who'd show up and say, no, no, that wasn't West Bloomfield Township. But, so yeah, five bucks to kill a wolf in the township and those are the resolutions that passed.
It seems like a lot of money back then.
kill a wolf in the township. And those are the resolutions that passed at the first meeting. I didn't do the calculation, but I think that's significant cash.
It is.
You know, it makes sense. Most of these, these fences were not, you know, it was dark, number one. Like we don't have a lot of bunch of electricity, no lights on. You know, you couldn't get a sprinkler to spray the wolf when he came by, like we do a deer or something, you know. So there was a real concern that individuals would lose their livestock to, to wolves that could be coming around at night and probably pretty scary. Um, today's a little different, but, uh, yeah, I can imagine. You know, it's also interesting to note, um, Alex de Tocqueville. I mean, anyone know who Alex de Tocqueville was?
You told him, sir.
So, you know, uh, very important, uh, French aristocrat, uh, who, um, wrote the, um, something like Democracy in America or something like, you know, series of books about democracy in the fledgling country of, of the United States. He spent significant time in Michigan, in fact, when he was here, and, um, did write about his travels through the area that would have been Bloomfield Township, um, in his journal entries. So he traveled through here in 1831 on his way to Saginaw. Why Saginaw? You know, because at that time, Saginaw was considered the most westerly, um, uh, um, town or village of, of the, you know, um, European settlers at that time. So beyond that, there was no other settlement. So the farthest west, um, that we, that European settlers had, had prepared a city. So he stopped after coming through here. He stayed for the night. He left Detroit and got all the way to Pontiac, in fact, um, where he stayed the night in Pontiac. So, yeah, there you go. That's, uh, some interesting stuff about, uh, 198 years ago and two days, uh, that occurred here in Bloomfield Township.
Thank you, Martin. I have just a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
And it's a great kickoff to approaching our 200-year anniversary. Um, have we started any kind of organization? Any kind of, uh, anybody been appointed who's going to be spearheading the 200-year organization and celebration?
Are you volunteering?
No, I'm not. I'm on enough committees already.
We have started discussing it in our directors' meeting.
Okay.
And, um, we'll continue to focus on that. And I, I know there's been some design throw, uh, put out about what an emblem could look like. Uh, so we'll continue and report back to you.
Long as we're.
We're talking about it, doing it in tandem with the strategic plan implementation, so it's.
Well, one of the things that I was involved in the, um, 100 year of Walnut Lake School. And when we closed Walnut Lake School, it was like, we had a big celebration. And the more people that know, maybe something we could put in our newsletter or e-news, is if people have interesting historical things, we had people bring us all kinds of fascinating things when Walnut Lake School was a farm. And the games they used to play where they'd throw the ball, it was small farmhouse, so they would throw the ball back and forth over the house. That was one of the games they played. You know, there were little bits and pieces that local people knew that shared with us, like this stuff Martin has. It's fascinating. Thank you for that. That was a really nice way to end the meeting. But I think if we talk about it, we might get some people that might have some.
Come forward.
You might also want to contact former clerk, Wilma Cotton, who wrote a book, Bloomfield Blossom.
I have, in fact.
I have it too.
Which I have, a lot of people do.
Yeah, Wilma, she's a great.
She has a great historical view of, um, Bloomfield Township, and she's a really good resource.
Thank you. It's Bloomfield Historical Society. Michael's on the board. Um, so we've got a lot of resources and definitely, we're sort of starting that process now.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for this, Martin. This was very educational, and I can't get over their penmanship.
Right. It's really beautiful.
These are copies or actual documents.
Yes, yes. It's in my office. If you want to stop by and see it, anybody could do that. Um, you know.
Maybe we should put it, make it, make it available if anybody stops.
It is online.
They can look at it online. Wonderful. All right. Thank you. And following that, I'll move for a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.